All right. We're ready. Want to call to order our city council workshop to discuss the PFM to assist with understanding P3s, July 22nd, 2019, 7:50 PM. Madam Royal call.
Mayor Ronnie Felder?
Here.
Chairperson Kashama Miller Anderson.
Present.
Chairperson Julia Botteau.
Here.
Councilperson Chardrick McCoy.
Here.
Councilperson Shirley Lanier.
Here.
Councilperson Douglas Lawson.
Here.
City manager Jonathan Evans.
Present.
Deputy city clerk Jacqueline Burgess is present. Assistant city attorney Lina Busby.
Here.
Yellow corn.
All right. Do we have to do the invocation and the pledge again? Is that, I know it's proper, but do we have to? Can we just go ahead? We've done it twice tonight. Okay. All right. We'll go right into, we'll go straight into our, why does it say discussion and deliberation on here? It's just a workshop.
Workshop, yeah.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, if I may have the finance director, Mr. Randy Sherman, introduce the presenters to talk about P3 projects and getting better informed on how the city would proceed in the event that we wanted to explore this option for development.
Good evening. Randy Sherman, Director of Finance and Administrative Services. The last time we met on, talking about city facilities, there were a couple of questions that we're going to try to answer for you tonight, or at least partially answer for you tonight. First question was talking about public, public-private partnerships. And Sergio Masvidal from PFM, our Public Financial Management, Financial Advisor, is here to make a presentation on that. You also asked about similar projects. Unfortunately, about 30 miles south of here in Boynton Beach is a similar project going on. And the assistant city manager, Collin Groff, is here from Boynton Beach to talk about their project. And then you also talked about costs. So once the two of them have moved through, then we'll get in and I'll present the costs on the south side and the north side. And again, Mr. Masvidal does have travel arrangement issues. Gladly come back at a later time, you know, if we want to get into it further with them. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Masvidal.
Thank you, Randy. Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Sergio Masvidal, PFM Financial Advisors. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to come here and just discuss P3s in a workshop setting. Certainly, P3s have gone a lot of discussion nationally in the news, and there's a lot of, I think, misconceptions. So it's important, and I think you guys are taking an excellent first step here in having, gaining a better understanding around them. So with that, I will try to move through these slides relatively quickly, kind of at a high level here, leaving some time for discussion, an opportunity for discussion at the end. However, please don't hesitate to stop me along the way if, you know, there's more questions on a specific slide that we present. So again, as Randy pointed out, we'll introduce project delivery alternatives, including P3s, and then we'll talk about a couple sample case studies. Fortunately, there are a couple cities just south of you that are doing, are currently underway with a similar project to what you're considering here. So let's start by discussing project finance and alternative development methods. So there's a few types of arrangements that you might consider in project finance generally, right? These arrangements are typically, just as the name implies, in project finance, you finance a project that supports the financing. So the project itself should generate revenues that support whatever borrowing you undertake on the city's side. In addition, the debt for those projects typically is nonrecourse. You wouldn't pledge the ad valorem taxing power of the city in order to finance one of these projects. There would be, the project would generate revenues that in turn would support a debt financing. We think about construction and operating risk, kind of at the outset of any project considered. And when I say that, I mean the full lifecycle costs of a project. So it's not just the cost of interest on the debt, it's also the cost of maintaining that facility, operating that facility for a long term, for the next, you know, 30, 40, 50, 60 years even. And one important thing that we'll also touch on here is project finance is not new at all in the municipal industry. It's been around for decades, multiple, multiple decades. Project finance is very, is something that's used by every form of government around the country for years. So project finance and public-private partnerships, how do those two kind of come together? You know, a P3 can take many different forms, and there's very broad definitions for public-private partnerships, what I'll call P3s here, you know, moving forward. The city has probably engaged in some forms of P3s already. If you think about in the simplest forms, just a contract to operate one of your facilities, a design-build contract for the utility system, those are types of P3s along the spectrum of P3s. There are P3s that might involve all elements, design, build, operations, maintenance, as well as the financing. At PFM, when we advise our clients on P3s, we advise you to kind of take each of those components individually, think about them on an individual basis, and what makes sense for the private sector to do, and what makes sense for the public sector to do. In addition, you know, after this, we'll consider, at the core of P3s, the one thing I'd like you to keep in mind is risk transference. What risk is being transferred to the private sector when you engage in a P3? What risk are you, are you maintaining yourself in a P3? Really, that's where the value of a P3 lies, that's where the economics lie, is where's that risk transference along that spectrum? So let's discuss project delivery methods. This graphic that's in front of you illustrates really that range of project delivery methods. You'll have on your left side of the screen, kind of the fully traditional public methodology, which is, you know, design-build contracts, or a construction manager at risk contract. There's a design-build, bid-build contract. So all sorts of public, public, traditional, public type of structures. All the way to the right side, when you think about fully privatized, for some reason those slides aren't showing up in the bottom boxes, but all the way to the right, you have your design-build-finance, design-build-operate-and-maintain. And all the way to the farther side would be an asset sale. If the city has an asset that it's considering selling or doing a long-term lease on, that would be a fully privatized transaction. So we're going to try to break down the rest of these elements, slides seven through 11 or 12 or so, and then we'll summarize so we can discuss further. On slide seven, we talk about kind of really high-level development issues along that public-private spectrum. So you think about the management of the facility, the design, where are the revenue sources coming from? Who's financing that facility? What are the security sources, the revenue pledge behind that financing? The construction and operations, who's taking that risk? Is that the city? Is that public? Is that private? And where do those kind of, where do the benefits lie there? There are certain control issues as well. Costs might be better on one side if the private side did it, costs might be better if the public sector runs it. So we'll talk about kind of high-level, those are the development elements I'd like you to consider. As far as the construction strategies, on slide eight now, really, construction is dependent on two things, I would say. Complexity of the project. What are you, what are you building? What are you designing? You know, if it's a tunnel, for example, that's a whole different project than a municipal facility, which may be more standard, more straightforward. So complexity is one thing to consider. Do you want to transfer that risk of complexity to the private sector, depending on how complicated that project is to build, what kind of unforeseen issues might be involved in that project that you might want to transfer to the, to the private sector? In addition to complexity of projects, the other thing is just economies of scale. If the private sector is designing something or building something near the footprint that you're considering you're building, are there economies of scale to having the private sector also develop your facility? Instead of kind of engaging two separate construction firms or two separate design firms, are there certain benefits to having one firm do everything on that footprint? That's something certainly you'd want to consider during the construction element. As far as operations and maintenance strategies, historically, these have been publicly-run, you know, services, operations and maintenance of your existing facilities. Think about any, any general operational item every day, something as simple as changing out light bulbs, making sure facilities work. That has traditionally been run by the public sector. There can be, again, savings to a city if you were to privatize some of those services. You have to consider that, kind of again, thinking about one component on O&amp;M strategies, consider whether you'd want to privatize that. It might make sense for a municipal facility to privatize operations and maintenance. However, for a public safety building such as a police facility or a fire facility, maybe the control needs to be a little bit more tightly guarded, and you really need to have your own people running that facility. So something to consider on, on operations and maintenance. The other thing to consider on O&amp;M that's, I would say critically important, and more and more issuers and clients that we work with are looking at this element, is the long-term lifecycle of that, of that facility. So many cases, we've seen cities have facilities or infrastructure that has just not been maintained properly over the years. Let's face it, there's economic recessions that move forward, there's different priorities in the budget every year, sometimes infrastructure maintenance gets deferred. So what does that do? It shortens the, the useful life of a facility that may have lasted 50 years, now you're shortening to 35 years, just because, you know, simple, or I wouldn't say simple, but routine milestone maintenance that needed to be done was never done. Through a privatized O&amp;M contract, you can control that. So you make sure at the end of that O&amp;M contract, you get that infrastructure back, that facility back exactly in the kind of shape that you want it to run it for another 20 or so years. And then two more slides on, on these elements, revenue and credit strategies. So here, again, we're getting into the financing aspects of it, probably farther ahead than where you are today in making your decision, but we have to look at what the revenue streams are that would support a project. If it's a project delivery that you're discussing here as far as having a developer come in and build some private use or mixed-use facilities, as well as your public sector buildings, are there going to be lease payments on an annual basis from that developer? How credit-worthy are those lease payments? There's, there's also going to be expectations of tax increases in the future that can also support financing a project for the public sector. So we look at those kind of revenue strategies, how credit-worthy are they? What's the cost of borrowing, depending on those different revenue streams, and the mix of revenue streams that the city would expect to receive? And then finally, financing strategies. I won't spend a lot of time on this, just because I think it's probably farther ahead than where we need to be today, but certainly there's a, you know, plenty of financing strategies available to the city, no matter what structure you determine along that spectrum, whether it's fully public, traditional model, or a fully privatized model, and I'm specifically speaking about the city's facility here. You can use private activity bonds, taxable bonds, things like that, that still gain the efficiencies of the, you know, well-known municipal market. So with that, I'll summarize on 12, just again, the key things, key project inputs we look at, revenue sources, construction costs and timing, financing, interest rates, the operational expenses, capital, renewal and replacement, we talked about that as being a, an important one. And then we like to model this out over the long term. What's a full lifecycle of a project? How does that impact the city's budgets, not just this year, but for years to come into the future? And then when are P3s, public-private partnerships viable? There's a couple, couple key, you know, simple examples, greenfield projects, so brand-new, empty space, that's, that's certainly P3-worthy, you know, private sector could get interested in that. Brownfield projects at the same time, you know, assets that are already existing, underfunded lifecycle costs, just need to be rehabbed some, P3s may have interest in that as well. And then, of course, there's financial considerations. Do you let the private sector finance those, those projects themselves, maybe at a little higher cost of capital? Again, just transfer, transferring risk, transferring benefit, that's a decision we have to make, kind of a few steps down the line, if you choose to move forward. But certainly, the last bullet here I want to make sure we cover is value capture. So are you capturing value from your existing assets? Is there a better value for your existing asset? Is there pricing power, economies of scale, of having one developer come in and kind of build all these facilities at once? So with that, I think, we have a couple sample case studies here. I mentioned a few projects going on to the south that I think will be helpful in just framing the, the considerations here. So I'll try to cover these quickly as well. City of Miami, I'm not sure how many of you might be familiar with the Miami Riverside Center. It was recently in the newspapers, the city commission actually just approved this project to move forward, I want to say about three weeks ago. Just to give you a little bit of history, in 2016, the city determined that their current, let me know if anyone's been to Miami and seen that administrative building now. It's on the river, it's in downtown core. They, they decided in 2016 that that was really an underutilized asset, considering where it was and the development going on around it. It's about four acres of land, so not a huge space. The actual city administrative building only takes up about an acre and a half of that, of that property. So what did they do? They decided, this is valuable waterfront land, it's on the river, it's in the downtown core, we can probably make better use of this asset. They went out with a voter referendum in order, because it's on waterfront, the city of Miami statutes require that they go off a voter referendum, and basically said to the voters, "We would like to lease this over a long-term, 99-year lease, to a private developer that will build a mixed-use project there." It's going to include, right now, the developer's plans include hotel, condo, and apartments, as well as a new administrative building for the city of Miami, brand-new facility there. 64% of the voters approved that. Just in 2019, as I mentioned a few weeks ago, they brought the development agreements back to the commission, and the commission approved moving forward with that. Now, how's that transaction going to work? You'll see here on the, on the screen, the city benefits from, they get lease income. So there is lease payments coming in from the developer, they have already made their first deposit, once that was approved by the commission. I believe that lease is just under $4 million a year. That's a lease payment they receive. They're also estimated to receive brand-new property tax revenues. When you think about it, this was a, an asset, the administrative building that was a public-purpose asset, was not on the tax rolls. Now they're, they're turning it and making this property, putting it on the tax rolls, they will, they'll generate property tax revenues from there. Brand-new facility for the, for the city administrative folks, lifecycle planning, their current facility, I'm not an engineer, but I understand their current facility may have been under-maintained, so there's some lifecycle planning that will go on. So now this new facility will be, as part of the development agreement, will be maintained by that private developer, and at the end of the lease term, the city will get, will get their building, you know, in, in the shape that they expect it to be. And then, of course, improved waterfront activation, that's something that the city planners were certainly important to them. So what are the private benefits? Of course, a private developer comes in and has waterfront site, desirable location, prime location to build right now, larger development area, more buildable density, they, they have a long-term O&amp;M contract for the operations and maintenance, and they, they are granted a developer fee. At the end of the day, you know, when you reran the economics for this project, the building it will cost about $150 million, that's the capital cost of that building, not the financing cost. However, we did structure the financing, the financing's still forthcoming, but we are structuring the financing such that it fits within the lease payments received from the developer, as well as the expected property tax revenues over that long term. Now, there's of course risk that the developer, we identified early on that there was risk that, what happens if you enter into this lease, you expect your lease payments to come in, and they're going to come in no matter what, and the developer never builds their project, the private side of this project? Then the tax revenues the city was dependent on to service that debt don't become, don't materialize. Well, after negotiations with the developer, we did put in kind of certain safety guards that the developer, if they didn't build their project, and I may get the years incorrect, but bear with me, if they don't build their project, by year five, they have to make increased lease payments to the city in order for the city to be able to continue servicing their debt. And then at the end of year nine, if the developer hasn't constructed what they anticipated to construct, the entire project reverts back to the city, and the city can go ahead and negotiate with a new developer to, to rehabilitate that area. So that's the city of Miami's project. Again, we're just kind of at the, at the very forefront of this, but I think gentleman from Boynton Beach will come up and discuss his. I'll pause there in case there's any questions.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may, what was the process that the city of Miami undertook to be able to solicit participation from the private sector on this project?
That's a, that's a great question. They, they went out with a full procurement for developers, so, and actually did it in two parts. So it was a, a request for, I might get the terminology wrong, RFLI, Request for Letters of Interest, I believe that stands for. They received letters of interest from the developer community, I think they, they might have got in 15 or 20. Then they shortlisted that group to, I believe it was seven or eight, then they were kind of, went out for a request for bids, and they solicited basically, who was, you know, their criteria was, who would provide the greatest annual lease payment to the city? And then also, they looked at kind of the, what I'll call the esoteric factors, as far as what are they going to design there, how will they activate the waterfront, kind of the more soft factors, I'll call them, in addition to the, the dollar values. And I can give you, Mr. Manager, more detail on exactly what that process was.
Yeah, we, that, yeah, that would be beneficial to have that information as far as the process that they undertook. And now, through that letter of interest and that solicitation, at what point does the board have the ability or find out the business acumen and the financial wherewithal of those entities that are involved in the process, or when, when you get all, when you all get involved? Because that, that's, I think, a principal concern, is that you, anyone can give you a proposal, but do they have the finances and the business acumen to pull off a project like this that will?
That's an excellent point, and absolutely, I think in the, early on in the process, from RFLI to where you would shortlist proposals that can even give you a bid, you will want to get certain years' financials, you know, historical financials for that firm, exactly what their ownership structure is now, kind of what banking relationships they have. I believe they even had letters from lending institutions that supported that they would finance the project for them. So absolutely, you want to make sure, that's, that's criteria one, you want to make sure you pick a partner that's credit-worthy for you all.
Anyone have any questions or comments regarding this section? All right. We're going to Boynton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So first off, I'll introduce myself. Collin Groff, I'm the assistant city manager for the city of Boynton. I'm glad to be here, although I didn't know I was going to do a presentation or talk to you all or anything. So this is kind of starting from scratch, but I do want to follow up, because that was a great question on how do you procure these services? What I do, I'm going to go real quickly through our project so you can see what we did, because I think it's very similar to what you guys are looking at. But I do want to talk about how we procured it, because we did it very similarly to Miami, although just a tad bit different. And our procurement also has been through the inspector general in Palm Beach County. So we do know it works, and we didn't get any comments. So that's very important for us in Palm Beach County to, to know that. We use the CCNA, Consultant Competitive Negotiation Act legislation in the state of Florida to do it. So we did a qualification-based-only process, which was two steps. The first step was a request for qualifications or a request for letters of interest. And what we requested was, we wanted to know a couple things, what projects, what, what the team looks like, what their experience was, what kind of projects they built, and what kind of financial partner they would bring to the table. Because we wanted to see, that's a very important part of it, is the financial partner, to make sure that, and then that group was shortlisted to three, which then offered their proposed plans, what they would do and what they would build, and also their, their, their financial package with all the details, and then that was also reviewed and graded. And then we selected that team based on qualifications. The third really step was, we also had an off-ramp, so we, we said we would, they actually had to pay for the first phase of the project, we didn't pay a dime. They paid for the first phase to get us to what we called guaranteed maximum prices, and guaranteed schedules, and guaranteed financing. They paid for all of that, brought it to us, and we had an off-ramp, that if we didn't like that, we would pay them for their work up to that date, and then we would get all of that information and move to somebody else. So we had those guarantees in that procurement process to make sure we covered all of the contingencies that could come up. The other thing we did too, is in the request, we said, we asked them to supply all of their team members. We wanted to make sure when we approved the team to move forward, every single team member was included, so we didn't run afoul of any procurement rules later on, when we had to do changes, or we wanted to add something to the project, or something like that. So we, so that was the, the follow-up on that question, that was how we procured it, and it worked really, really well. Takes six to seven months, it's not real short, but it works real well, and you get a lot of really good information. And we wound up with a really good team. So with that, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, I don't know how many slides this is, because I can't remember which presentation this is, so, but I'm going to try to go through this to talk about our project. So we did a very similar project, it's a mixed-use project in downtown Boynton Beach, we owned about 16 and a half acres, and, in downtown, which housed five or six really old government buildings. They were completely underutilized, they were falling down, with the exception of a 20,000 square foot addition to a library that was only eight years old, and we still owe money on. That was one of the interesting twists in this project. We knew we needed some new buildings, we didn't, we didn't, but we didn't want to leverage existing tax dollars on, on payments. You know, we could go out and bond, the city's not in that bad a shape, our bond rating's pretty good, so we could have gone out and borrowed $100 million and put it on the tax, you know, and, and put that money, and we'd have to raise our millage, millage rates a little bit to cover it. But we really didn't want to go there, because we knew that in this area, we had, there was a lot of potential for private development. So we felt if we could use about half of our property for private development, we could leverage those future taxes, like Jim talked about, your consultant talked about, leverage those future taxes to cover the construction cost of the public buildings. So that's kind of how we, we decided to go forward with a P3. The challenge we had is, we really couldn't find anybody in the country that had done one this complicated with multiple, we're building five buildings, plus there's four, five private development buildings, there's parking licenses, parking garages, parks, it's not just buildings, we're building parks also at the same time, all on the same site, and an off-site, one off-site building. It's a mixture of public safety buildings and municipal buildings, which are different kinds of construction, different types of contractors. So it's fairly complicated. So Miami was actually going forward with their project very close times, so we kind of looked at what they were doing, we looked at some places in California done, and we kind of took some of our ideas. So we owned it, and we wanted to build it, and we wanted to replace the police, we wanted to get that actually out of downtown. We had a, we had a public safety complex, we'd already built our fire administration building, NEOC, and we wanted to build our police station at the same site. So we were going to move that off-site. We selected E2L Real Estate Solutions as the master developer. So we chose a master developer, and underneath that master developer, everybody else comes underneath that. So it's a, a firm that kind of controls all of the contracts and controls the construction. We talked about how we, so the public portion is, we're building a brand-new city hall, brand-new library, brand-new police station, and a brand-new downtown fire station to serve all of this new development. We're also, we had an old building, built in 1928, it was an old high school, that had decayed almost nothing, falling down. So we decided to go ahead and restore that into a cultural center, because we had a bunch of small buildings used for, you know, recreation activities, that were kind of falling down, so we said, "Let's pull all those together into one building and restore this building." So it's a very interesting part of the project. And then the developers bringing in apartments, hotel, parking garages, retail space, office space. And what's interesting in the city hall, we're also in the city hall constructing some what we call incubator space for businesses to come in and rent in city hall, so they have the access to both our library services and all of our technical services in our library, and the city government. So we're moving that into city hall. So we've got this vision that we started. I'm not going to go through this, we had an approved master plan, and we went through that process. I will say, one of the point is, is the master plan that we're building right now is very different than the master plan that was submitted by the developer that we chose. So that's one of my points. When I get to the end, I'm going to give you some points, some, some key points to make these things work and how they work. And again, our final site plan was different than our master plan. So we had a master plan, our final, and the reason is, because it's a team effort, lots of people, the public's involved. We did hundreds of public meetings, we did public workshops with feedback, we had voting tools, and I did most of them myself, so I know that a lot of time out there, talking to the public, finding out. We let the public pick the architectural style, the colors, the playground equipment, where the parks go, kind of the layout. Now, the things we didn't bring to the public are the professional things that the engineers pick, like, what is the building going to be built out of, you know, and things like that. That's left for the professionals. But we separated it up, because we wanted a lot of public input, and we got it. So just real quick, that's some, from the private development being built in the, in our cultural center. Most of our buildings, we're building a private component into the building, you know, we got some restaurant space, the city center, which is the city hall, has the business incubator space and a nice cafe in the lobby, really for staff and for, because it's a combined city hall library, first two floors is kind of public access to all the staff, so like building services and, and utilities and all that on the first floor, along with the library, and then the second floor is all library, and then the third and fourth are administration buildings. The residential commercial, about 320 units, is a total of about 600 residential units. It's, we're up to about 160-room hotel, and around 30,000 square feet of office space, office retail-type space in the project. And then we have two parking garages to park all of this, which is about 1,700 parking spaces. What's interesting is, is the reason we did that is, we knew it would stimulate the growth around us. And since this project kind of kicked off, we, we've got three, we've got one finished mixed-use development, three approved, ready to break ground and go in, and another three or four that's in the preliminary planning stages. It's about half a billion dollars' worth of construction, of, of development, approved It's about half a billion dollars' worth of construction, of, of development, approved and ready to go, and another half, half a billion that's in process. So it really did do what we wanted it to do, which was stimulate the growth in our downtown. We didn't have a downtown, so we're creating it.
Where's this exactly?
So this is on, if you go, and you go to Boynton, and you get off on Boynton Beach Boulevard, and you go toward the ocean. Right before you get to Federal is between, between Boynton Beach Boulevard and Ocean, we have an Ocean Avenue two. Right between there is, is that's our downtown area. It starts at Seacrest, and it goes all the way to our Marina District. So we have a downtown district and a Marina District. And it's going to be all mixed-use, it's high density, it is fairly high density, it is more of an urban setting. It's what the elected officials wanted in that area, they wanted to keep it a little more suburban in other areas, but there they wanted the urban setting. So that's where it is. Real quick, just some pictures, that's, city hall, actually, all the walls are up right now, and it does look sort of like that. But that's our new city hall library and our lobby, and we're trying to build it so it's very friendly for the public, so they can come in and use it. With a cafe, we're going to have concerts, we're going to have book readings and things. It's really to bring the public to our, to the downtown and have a lot of activities. City Hall won't be nine to five, it'll be open, that building will be open till seven days a week, from probably seven AM to eleven PM. Every day, we've got staffing for it and that we're working on, trying to figure all that out as we go. But we want to keep the, the city buildings active, so the rest of the town is active. Because we don't, we don't want is a hundred and ten thousand square foot building that's dead at night. So real quick, that's another picture, we're also putting a lot of public art, about a million dollars' worth of public art into the project, and that's one of our art pieces. I don't understand, but I'm not an artist, so I'm not going to go into that. I'm an engineer, so that's the construction, so we actually are under construction. So this is a project that's real, I mean, it's, it's being built right now, it's under construction. We decided at the last minute, about two months before we were supposed to start construction on the city hall, we were going to stay in our building and then move, you know, build part of it, and then build our city hall, and the private developer build a part, and then we would move in. You know, we kind of had it phased out over five years, but we started looking at the market, and the worst thing that can happen is the private development doesn't get built. We're not, we're not relying on it for our financing like Miami, Dade is, they're relying, Miami, City Miami is relying it on their financing, we're not. This is in our CRA, so we're relying on total TIF funding in the CRA to fund our leases, because it's a P three where we're leased, ground leasing to, to five oh one three C, and then we're going to lease the building back for twenty-five years, and then we own it. But we didn't rely on that, but we still need the private development. So we decided about two months before we started construction to go ahead and move the entire city into temporary space. So we had two months to find the space and to move everybody. That was a challenge, but that's the, that's the secret of P threes. With design build, you have to be flexible enough, and, and that's one of my points is, is, you know, we had, we had a team that was flexible enough to make these decisions on the fly and make it happen, and then keep it within the legal framework of the procurement process. Because one of the things we procured in, in our team, we said we want a real estate broker, because we may need space. So we said, put one on the team, so we don't have to go out and procure one. So we had one, and they were able to go out and find a space, and we got moved. We had, found some great spaces to move into, it was amazing, I don't know how it happened, but it happened.
So is your city hall spread out in different areas?
It's not, it's not. We were fortunate enough to find, we, we put our police into a warehouse space, it's right across the street from where they're building their new building. Now, we had to remodel a little bit for police, police is the hardest to move, absolute hardest to move. They have demands that are a lot more than everybody else. And then right across the street from that, we found a, an, an office building that happened to have the, the bottom floor was already set up in office spaces, perfect for a city hall. So we were able to move all of our city hall function, our library at the CRA had just bought an old bank building. So we said, well, let's just remodel and put the library in the bank, so we moved the library.
Is this Riviera Beach or Boynton?
Exactly, that's why, I think that's why we wanted to share the story, because we're very similar to you all, it's a very similar setup. And we just found these places and moved in, and we all worked as a team to get it moved. But the real point is, is we're under construction. That building actually, that was from three weeks ago, that building actually is already up, you can see the four-story building right now. That's our old high school that we're remodeling, we're going to be opening that in October. It's not going to be fully open, because the parking's not going to be quite ready, but we'll have it open. So we took a building that was falling down, and we completely restored it, and this is one of the show, this is like one of the few, one of the few places ever used this type of architecture with the curved iron beams and, and the, and the Dade County pine purlons and roof. And we, we were able to restore about seventy percent of it. It was, you know, so we really were able to capture it. But then the rest of it's a modern building, so we, we adaptively reused the historic building into a very modern cultural center. It's going to be full of, for arts and for craft, but the stadium, the auditorium's going to sit five hundred people for a concert. There's no place in the south that can really, in our area, that can do that, so we think it's going to be heavily used. Real quick, again, we picked, all of our playground equipment is going to be unique. We found a company that's, that's kind of taking designs and building them unique to Boynton Beach, so they're kind of one of a kind. And, and it doesn't cost any more than standard playground equipment, but that's something the public wanted, and the themes fit Boynton Beach. We went outside, what do you want, what theme do you want, and they picked a theme, and we picked the, the playground equipment. People say, why is playground equipment important? Well, we want to bring those families in. I mean, we're, somebody said earlier, designing for millennials, I mean, that's what we're doing, that's what we're seeing moving in, so we're designing for that. Again, whoops, let me go a little faster here. New police and fire station, brand-new, modern police and fire station. The downtown fire station is an urban setting, it's a two-story building, it's three, it's a full-service fire station, and we also put a police annex into it. And what's interesting is, we decided to start a new utility for this project to provide cold water to all of the private and public buildings. So the utility actually started a chilled water utility, or district energy utility. So the utility now is going to provide the energy for the air conditioning to all of the buildings in this, not just here, but all the other private developments surrounding it that's coming up. And it's, and it's a profit center for the utility and for the city. So the profits from that are going to go to help pay lease payments and some other things, so. It's just another way, we didn't, when we went into it, we thought we could do, we didn't know if we could, and we decided it made sense, because it, it, for the project, it's very green, it's very environmentally friendly, but it's also attached to the fire station. So the fire, firemen are pretty interesting, but they've got the best cold water anywhere, because they're right next to the plant. But that, you can see actually, that building you see up in the, in the left corner, that's the chilled water plant that's already up, and we're going to be running it, we have to start running it first, because all these buildings, as we add drywall to them, they need air conditioning. So that'll be up, and you see the police station's up, we're actually getting ready to start doing the finishes inside, putting the windows in and finishing up the shell, so.
You guys did tilt wall construction?
It's all tilt wall, we will be moving into, the, the, the fire station we moved in in, in December of this year, the police station in January of next year, and the city hall about May of next year. We started construction this, let's see, when did we start? We did our groundbreaking in February? We actually started this project, we, we actually, we did this kind of workshop in July of twenty sixteen. Took us about nine months to get the contractor, and in about nine months to get the designs done and all of that, and to get to construction and permitting. But we're doing the whole project in thirty-six months. From the time they said, go, sign the, they signed, the commission said, sign the contract, to the time we're going to be moving it. And we can only do that with a P three, because we couldn't have gone out and gotten the financing ourselves and did all that. And we'll talk a little bit about, I can talk a little bit about. Our overall, the public cost is about a hundred and twenty million dollars. It's not all funded through bonds, there's a bunch of different funding sources. We're funding all the utility infrastructure out of utility funds. We're funding the chilled water, the air conditioning, which is a huge savings to construction out of, we actually started a new utility, borrowed money to bond, and it's actually going to be in the black within twenty-four months. It, it'll be paying off its bond and actually be making money. The hotel, I mean, the high school, we couldn't put into the private equity bonding, because there's some interesting rules. So we're paying for that with a variety of different sources. Some of the cert tax money is going to it, because it was a rundown building, so we could, we had said we were going to use some money there. We're doing some naming rights, we're going to sell some rooms and some naming rights, and that'll help pay for some of it. So we're paying for it out of multiple different ways. Our parking is being paid for by the land sale, so we had about ten million dollars' worth of land that we were going to sell. So we, instead of developer paying us ten million, he's building the parking garages and giving us our spaces. So it's paying for all of our parking, so there's no money there. So altogether, it's about a hundred and twenty million dollars, we're borrowing about eighty million through the private equity bonds. The contract, when you do these kind of projects, the contracts are complicated. But you can break them down fairly simple if you get the right team together. But what you have in, in a P three, in this type of P three, we're using private equity bonds, you're going to have a five oh one three C company that's going to go take, get the bonds out of the bond market. We're probably paying a quarter percent more than we could have done it ourselves, and it's well worth it, because we don't have to commit current funds. So we're not touching current taxes. So you have that company that you have contracts with, and we ground leased to them, and then they're building all the buildings, and we're going to lease the buildings back, the public buildings back for them. We also have development contracts with the private developer, to make sure he bills his thing. And there's, there's all kinds of safeguards in there to make sure he bills, and if he doesn't build, we have the land back, and we can go to the next developer that's ready to build. So we have safeguards built in. And then we have with our master developer, who's overseeing the whole thing. And the master developer works for us, and also works for the nonprofit that's funding it. So he works for both, and it's to make sure that project is, everything's being built together in, in coordination. So that's just some dates, I don't. We use, we also used the local building wealth program, we didn't have any set-asides. We just said, do the best you can to get as many local businesses and people involved in it. And our police station's up over fifty percent, is all built, built by local. Some of the others a little bit less, because of the type of construction where it is, but this was a great program, I don't, I don't want to go too much into this, but we call it building wealth, and it's a great program, we, we got it, we actually stole it from somebody else, but we're going to take credit for it.
Is this Delray, Delray have something?
They, they tried to do it and couldn't get it off the ground, we got ours off the ground. We're, we're better than Delray. I don't know if we're better than Riviera Beach, but we're better than Delray. Anyways, but that was a really important part of the project, was to make sure as much of this money stayed local as possible. And we're doing really well, I, I think we're, by the time we're said and done, about twenty-five to thirty percent of it will be local contractors, and, and even more of it'll be local with other things that we're doing. So that's really important to us, is to make sure we're building that wealth in our local community. So anyways, that's just some contact information. So what I wanted to end with is, that's kind of our project, it's a couple of key points. If you're really considering going down to redevelop your, you know, you've got a great area, it's a very similar type project to redevelop it. It's a couple of things you have to have. One is, is you're already doing it, you've got a good consultant onboard. We, we were unfortunate, we didn't have any money, so we couldn't hire a consultant, so they made me do it all. Not sure they got the best value for their money, but, but, but I think the first key is, you have to have a project champion. In our case, the city manager, through the city, I'm the project champion for the city. In other words, and through, I have the city manager's authority, and my job is to make sure every single department, every single person, every single staff member in the city, every single department, every single process is geared to making sure this project happens. So when a roadblock comes up, my job is to make sure it goes away. And you have to have that project champion high enough level to make sure you can get those roadblocks out of the way. So I can go, when I'm having a permitting problem, I can go to the building official and say, you know, you've got to solve this, and you have till tomorrow at noon to have it solved, and their job is to solve it. And you do it nicely and you work, but you have to have that project champion, because without it, you, you're not going to make the project work, any kind of project. You've got to have somebody that's excited about it, I live and breathe this every day, I get up, and I have a full-time job too, being Assistant City Manager over five or six departments, so not my only job, but you have to be able to do that. The second thing you need is a really good technical team. And if you don't have it in-house, you need to go out and find a technical team that understands these kind of mixed-use P three-type projects, that have the skills. We're fortunate we have it in-house, we have a public works director who's an engineer, a building official, and a general contractor. We brought in an outside contract architect to work on this team, he's a full-time architect, done nothing but government buildings his whole career, he's great. And then I have, I've done about sixty-five of these types of projects, so I have the experience on the construction side and, and the contract side. So that's our expert team. It's in-house, which we could have used a consultant too, we just chose to do it in-house, we just happen to have the team. And the third thing, which is probably most important, is, is one of the things we told our elected officials from day one is, is you've got to be fully supportive of the project all the way through. You may, there may be pieces of it that, hey, that doesn't make total sense, but if the overall project works, sometimes you have to overlook the one or two things that may not make sense. For example, I told you about our library, which is the twenty thousand square feet that we still owed money on. When the proposals came in, it was saving that piece, because we said we want to save that piece in our, our, by the way, RFP was only nineteen pages. It wasn't huge, it was nineteen pages. You don't have to be complicated on this, you get a good product not being complicated. But we got about three or four months into the, to the conceptual design and laying it out, and we just figured out, said, that stupid library is right in the way of everything, it was hurting the entire site and the entire design. So we went to the commission and said, we want to make a change, we want to tear this building down. They looked at us, said, well, do you think it's the best thing? What are we going to get? We said, well, we're going to get this many more apartments, we're going to get this, we're going to get this circulation, they said, go tear it down. Now, they, did they like it? Did they get a little bit of criticism? They got a little bit, but not much, because it made sense, we explained it. But all through this process, we've had full support from our elected officials. And that is so important, because once you make a decision to go forward, you go forward. These things do work, we're evidence, they work. We have, we did not commit any current tax dollars, we did not raise any taxes, we're not, so we're building a hundred and twenty million dollars' worth of government buildings, and we didn't touch the taxes. Now, we're going to pull future taxes from the future development that's coming and use that for our lease payment, but we were able to build our lease payment into, we've got some, we've got a whole twenty-five-year schedule where the money's coming from, but it's not, it's not having to commit that current. But you, we couldn't have done that without our elected board saying, you know, we want to do this, and we're behind you. Now, that doesn't mean it's always been smooth, I mean, there's a few rough patches here, you've got to go in, and you've got to talk, and you've got to have workshops, and you've got to discuss things, you've got to get beaten up a little bit, and then you, you know, say, well, let's change this. But that's the way these projects work, and, and it really is a way to do a big project successfully, is to use this kind of P three model and get a great team together of multiple different types of companies. We have twenty different companies involved, all doing their piece. And it works, because we're all have the same goal at the end, is we want to finish this and have a vibrant downtown, so. Anyways, with that, I went a little longer than I wanted to, but anyways, any questions for us? Since we're going, living through the pain, but no, it's really not that bad, it's actually been a great project. It hasn't, it really hasn't been bad, there's, you know, a few rough spots, but nothing really bad.
Well, I, I definitely appreciate your presentation and your enthusiasm, and I think that in itself just makes you want to go out and find somebody right now and get started. I mean, this is great. I would love to see how we can get something going like this myself, so. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, if I may, can, can you talk about the public participation process? Because we've had some internal conversations, and conceptually, staff has worked on what we believe to be the most opportune site for certain facilities. However, there hasn't been that public information component, and I think that's a very valuable component, because at the end of the day, you know, the public needs to take ownership of it as well. And the other question I have is the housing element to that, because I think that creates a lot of synergy for what you're trying to do. And we don't want to get into a project that just builds municipal facilities and lease space. We want to have that synergy where people can live, work, and play in that area, so if you can speak to that.
Well, I'll answer the first question first, and my boss, you know my boss, I worked for Lori, she always tells me I tell too many state secrets, but that's okay, I don't mind. But really, the secret is, is you're right, we started in-house with our staff, talked about how do we want to do this, and we met, and we talked about it, but we knew we needed public input, because one of the things you know in government, when you work in local government, you're going to have a group of people that, they may not be against it, but they're going to be very outspoken. So we identified who they were, what they would have problems with. Up front, staff, we know them, they come to every commission meeting, we're talking to them, and we appreciate them, because they're usually, the citizens that are involved, the citizens that you want to help, because they're involved, and so we appreciate that. But we knew who they were. So the first thing we did is we sat down and said, what are they going to want to see, and what are they going to have input in? And we actually designed public input based on what we felt like they're, what they needed to see. So one of the big things in Boynton Beach was architectural style, there's a group of people that are big on architectural style. That may not be here, that just happens to be what we had, that was one thing. And so we said, we're going to do a public workshop where we're going to bring in styles, you're going to pick styles, and you get to vote, and then we're going to go back, and we're going to work some more, and we're going to bring them back, and it's enter the process, we're going to let the public pick the architectural style, because we're, it's, it's, it's the public's buildings, let them pick it. And then that's going to be for the whole project, how we set. So that was one thing, so we did it. One of the biggest things we had was, we had a playground that the, that the community built twenty-two years ago, called Kid's Kingdom. They built it right here on the site, it was a beautiful playground twenty-two years ago. Two years ago, we had to close it, it was, it was basically the place where they did illegal business, if you know what I mean, all night long. And so we couldn't keep it open, and it was just bad, but the public built it, and they were very attached to it. And so we knew that just tearing it down wasn't going to work, so we knew we had to say, we're going to replace it, but we want to replace it with something modern and safe, and it's going to be easy to maintain and keep maintenance, because it was a wooden concrete structure, and you know wood in South Florida is not the best material to build with. That's what it was built with, so we knew we didn't want to do that, but we wanted their input. So the playgrounds were all picked, we had these public workshops where we brought these people in. We did things like, they had their names on pickets, so we did a picket giveaway at the same time, you got to vote on playground equipment that you wanted to see in the new playground. So we did these things to make sure that these things that we knew people were concerned about, they had a voice in. We did a lot of work, I probably went to a hundred different HOA meetings to talk about just a presentation like this, to talk about, why are we doing, what are we doing, what is, what, what's the intent, and talked to the public and got their input. And we just kept track of it, we kept track of all the input, we had emails coming in, and that's helped us design the project. All of that went right to our designers, so when people were picking playground equipment, went to the designers, this is what we're looking for. And they would come back, say, okay, based on those input, here's what we propose. Same thing with the building architecture, same thing with the park area, same thing with the layout, it was all, we decided upfront what we were going to do and what public input we were going to have, and then we did it, and then we lived by it. We didn't say, okay, we listened to you, now we're going to do our own thing, we lived by it. Now, I don't agree with a hundred percent of it, but I don't have to, it's not my job to agree. My job was to listen and then make sure it got put in there. And I've, I've lately forgot your second question. It was, it's too late.
The housing, the housing component.
Oh, the housing component, so, yeah, that was really important, because, so we have a private developer who's doing it, so we didn't want to get in his way, we wanted it. Oh, the housing component. So, yeah, that was really important, because, so, we have a private developer who's doing it, so we didn't wanna get in his way on, we wanted it market-driven. So, he came to us and he wanted to do workforce housing. But he said, "You know, if I do workforce housing on one, I'm gonna have to do something. I, I need some more density on the other." So, we had already been talking about changing our workforce housing policies to allow some density bonuses if you provide it by height, because we have some height restrictions that people don't like to go, but you can get a couple of extra stories on your building if you do some percentage of workforce housing. So, he was gonna take advantage of it and so we wanted that component in there. Um, we wanted to make sure we had enough people, so we're gonna have about twelve or thirteen hundred people living in this sixteen acres. We wanted to make sure they were living there, because we're gonna have thirty thousand square feet of office space. We want them working there. The incubator space, so you can move in. You can get out of college. You can move in. You got a business idea. You can open a little business in the incubator space. You can get a desk. Our library is, is full of technology. You don't have to buy a piece of equipment if you're right there next to the library. We have printers and copiers and three D printers and, I mean, just tons of technical equipment that's in our library, so you can take advantage of it, because you're right there. So, we wanted to make sure we had that, where you could, you could live there. You could start your business there and as your business grow, you could grow into one of the retail spaces. And we also, we wanted that entertainment along the ocean, so we have some restaurants and things coming in. And we also knew what that would do is stimulate. So, we, again, all down this area, we have multiple developments that are in either, have already been approved and it's very similar developments. They're a combination of residential, retail, office, uh, restaurant. Another hotel, so we're gonna have hotel on our site and hotel there, so we're getting hotels now to the downtown. So, that's how we addressed it. We, we actually put an RFP that we wanted residential components, retail. We put in there what we wanted. We didn't say how many. We didn't say what and we didn't say how. We just said, "We want these components in this mixed-use development." So, that's how we did it and it seemed to work, because we're building it, so it did work. So, anyways, any other quick questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you so much for just coming to speak on the experiences you're having. This is just eerie how it sounds like Riviera Beach and we're very excited. I've been talking about this P three and I know our board has been looking to just find out more information. Could you speak more on the CDC involvement and how you actually partnered with the CDC to get this job done?
The, uh,
CRA?
CRA. Oh, we have a CRA.
CRA, yes.
Get my, sorry, it's late now. CRA, yes. So, this, this, this land is actually in our CRA district. Um, and they had done, they, they completed a master plan about four years ago and they had shown this area to be a mixed-use. So, the way we did is we went to the CRA and they are funding about sixty percent of the project lease payments. And they're funding it out of their program funds. So, when the, when the TIF money comes into the CRA and I, it's probably very similar to CDC. So, the TIF money comes into the CRA and then it goes into a program fund and then they use that to fund redevelopment activities. So, this is a redevelopment activity, because this is one of the deadest spots in town, so it's definitely a stimulation, so it fits everything a CRA is supposed to do. With one exception is, is if you're gonna do a govern, if you're gonna spend it on government buildings, you have to get the other taxing authorities permission. So, we had to go to the county to get permission to spend it. So, I had to go do this sales pitch to the county commissioners. They bought off on it. It was seven oh vote to support it, so they, they bought off on it eventually, but, so, that's how we're doing it. We're doing it with the TIF funding program. But what we didn't do is, is we were trying to be conservative, so we knew we had, and I'm gonna use a round number, we knew we had ten million dollars of programming funding a year right now in the CRA, of which about six million of it's already committed to other development that's already going on. So, they had about four million, so we, we structured the payments. So, in the first five years, the CRA is covering about three and a half million dollars of our four and a half million, five million dollar payment. And we're covering the rest out of our fund, but we have some bonds retiring and over the next seven to ten years, we have some bonds retiring. And we're gonna take that money and then the CRA money's gonna go down and we're gonna pay more as the city. It's really all the same tax money, but it was a way for us, because it's, because it is in the CRA district, we don't, the city doesn't get any of that TIF funding. So, we're not getting any taxes for all this growth, so it's a way to pull some of that money back into the city, totally legal, to make payments on this P three. To me, it was, it was the ideal way to find, to, to pay the lease payments. Um, because we're taking, again, we're leveraging those future taxes that are gonna come into those program funds and they're gonna grow. We use today's funds. We, we anticipate those funds are gonna be twenty to twenty-five million dollars over the next five to ten years. So, the CRA is gonna have a ton of money to still spend on redevelopment and we're getting our projects done. So, it's really a win-win for everybody, so it really did work out well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, perfectly. And Madam Chair, a quick follow-up. Your staff that you actually had, um, you had full-time staff that was just working on this project. Was it current staff that was in place in the city of Boynton? Did you bring in additional people to work on this?
Um, no, actually, they're not full-time. So, the, the staff members that are actually running the project, there's three people. There's myself.
Yes.
And it's not my, because again, I, I'm still the assistant city manager doing all my other duties. It's our public works director, who is running public works and sanitation, solid waste and all of that. And then we did, we brought in one outside contractor. We brought in an architect that we had worked with before on some public buildings as our design professional in-house. And he's on contract and we're paying him through the duration of the project. And so, that's our three-member team. So, it's two in-house, which have other jobs. But one of the things we do is we have the master developer. Now, the master developer also has a team. So, there's a master developer who is a general contractor and he has a project manager on site. Actually, you had any two assistant project managers and an accountant-type person to kind of manage the money. And what they do, they do the heavy lifting every day of making sure all of the different twenty contractors are staying on schedule, submitting their prayer requests. Then it, and then we, we meet, uh, every week we meet for, there's, I think it's on Wednesdays now. We meet all day long on each project. Um, and we go over with the contractor on those projects, "What are we doing? Where are we?" And not, the, all three of us don't have to go every time, because each one has a, so, I'm responsible for the kind of finance contracts and all that and then my public works director's kind of sites and utilities and that. And then the architect's responsible for the building, so we kind of tag each other, so we're not there all the time. But that's how we're doing it and, and doing it design-build, you can do it that way, because you're not responsible for the day-to-day review of the project. Because those design builders have a product they have to deliver at a certain specification. And if they don't, they have to keep doing it till they do, so we have that guarantee in our contract, so it makes it a lot easier to manage it. I hope that answers your question.
Very much. Thank you.
It's, yeah. So, it's really, it's in-house kind of combination.
Right. Thank you.
Any other? Madam Chair, if I may, obviously, you have the, the public spaces and you have the situation that you're gonna be utilizing city hall past traditional business hours. Um, how did you incorporate the end-user, the city employees, the police department, the fire department in some of these spaces? Because obviously, they have unique needs and then the day-to-day operations and then add the public component in that, um, in those meetings. How did you mesh that?
Um, very carefully. No, um, so, the buildings themselves, when they're built, they are gonna be multi-use buildings, so that's a critical thing for security. So, we do have a very hefty security plan in place. Everything is camered. Everything in our downtown is camered. Every camera will go back to the police department, to a real crime, crime, whatever they call it, center. Um, so, that was one of the critical things we had upfront that we knew we needed to do, but how do we, how do we mesh it all together is, is the public came in and said, "That's what they wanted." They wanted to access the building. They didn't want those, of course, the library's open anyways and since the library's in city hall, you keep city hall open. Now, the administrative floors, that's why we picked the administrative floors on the third and fourth, because those will be closed. They, they can be closed, because they're up high. The lights will be on anyways, because you got the emergency lights on and we've got nice uplighting on the building, so it'll look active. But they're gonna be closed off. The elevators to the administrative floors can only be getting on with, you have the badge and all that, so it's got the full security. So, we can bring the public in the building and keep, still keep the building safe for staff. On the first floor, all the back office stuff, all of our development people, our utility people and all that, there actually, there's a big lobby that people come into and they can come up to the different windows, but they're behind the wall protected from the public and then those walls just close down after hours. They just closed out, so the public has full access to the lobby, which we will have security in and cameras. Um, our chambers are also in the building and they're around the corner, so, you know, the idea is we're gonna pipe the chamber information like y'all do on TVs and all that, so you can sit in the cafe. We're actually hoping to sell beer and wine in the cafe at, after five o'clock in city hall. I know that's unheard of, but we wanna keep it active. Now, during commission meetings, that may be really handy for staff.
Have a packed council.
Lori already passed the rules, said, "We can't drink during the meeting, but as soon as it's over, we can start."
Additional revenue stream of the budget.
Just so you know, just a little secret, but, uh, actually, on the fourth floor, we got a nice balcony, um, that overlooks our park. We have a big, uh, we're putting a big amphitheater in our park for concerts and the, the city hall front actually looks at the amphitheater. So, be able to sit on the fourth and third floor, have these big balconies that the staff can use or we can rent out, which we're gonna lease out to companies. When there's a big concert, they can have it. But on the fourth floor, you know, our city manager wanted to make sure it was designed so we could have a beer garden if we wanted it, so. Other question?
Anyone else?
So.
I am too.
Oh, so?
Where do we sign up?
But we're, we're, we're available, if, you know, as, as y'all go through this process, if you, if you guys have any questions or need any information, I've shared a, a bunch with Randy. You know, I've shared with some contracts and I've given some other stuff that we've done. And again, a lot of ours have already been through the inspection, been through the audits and so, cross your fingers, we think we, we've pretty much done a pretty good job making sure all the legal things are taken care of and we have a good project, so. Anything we can do to help, we glad to help.
Wonderful.
Cause you're in West Palm. We like our sister cities in West Palm.
And Riviera. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any other comments? Okay, so, we know what we wanna do. We wanna do exactly what they're doing, right?
Yes.
I mean, let's just take their playbook. They already put it together. Let's just take what they did and move forward. All right, so, you know where to go from here and, um,
Yep.
This would be the end of our meeting, guys. All right, stand adjourned.